Call our, uh, muffin meeting to order. Let's all start with what do you like, please? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to thank you all for coming out tonight. Okay, we'll call Councilman Jim Patrick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Julie Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Judy Berry. Berry, sorry. My apologies. Uh, council members, Mayor Pro Tem Troy Chambers here. Mayor Rod Patrick is an excused absentee. Police Chief Kittle.
Yes, sir. Present.
Janet Raisel.
Here.
Did I miss any of them?
Yes, Officer Coleman.
Oh, Officer Coleman, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Here.
And Miss Chambers. Public?
Present.
Okay, good, all right.
A few of us.
All right. Um, see.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I'm actually really good before the rest of us. Okay, if I may.
Uh, yes. We found out the other day from, uh, the auditors. It seems we're all, all the council members and mayor on the signing of the checks and everything, that we all need to get bonded.
Mm-hmm.
So, if it's all right in the council, I'd Julie check into that with whoever she does that with and tell them to get with it, because we can't really even sign any checks anymore. It's all bonded.
Senior surety.
Senior surety. Okay, uh, let's go ahead and put there any new business, Julie, if you'll give us a little more information on that.
Well, they said that, um, we currently have the office staff clerk and mayor has bonded. But we need to have all, anybody that says chess signer on the checks on the account has to be bonded as well.
I will also put there any new business.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'm gonna be in the office tomorrow, I can call the, um, senior surety company. Yeah, I can call them. Cool.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, then, uh, let's see. I entertain a motion for the bonding of the new business. Make that motion. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's an aye for me.
We need to speak up.
Oh, sir, sorry. So, aside from that, any other changes to the meeting minutes for this? Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the, uh, regular meeting agenda for Thursday, February 8th, 2024?
I make that motion to go ahead and approve, uh, are you doing the minutes or the agenda?
No, I'm sorry, agenda, my fault.
Minutes.
Uh, I'll, who are the agenda, who are the minutes?
No.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to go ahead and approve the agenda for February 8th, 2024.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, meeting minutes, and this is for...
Thursday, January 11th.
Okay, Thursday, January 11th, 2024.
I believe that we do need to amend, because the reason was not available at that meeting? Say that again?
The January 11th meeting? Is that the one?
No, I was, I was at the January meeting, I was not at the December.
Okay.
Okay, then I'm good.
Do you have a motion to accept the meeting minutes for Thursday, January 11th, 2024?
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. All right, reports, clerk and treasurer.
Um, we're working on getting the audit finished. Maybe we had a nice session with the auditors, if you wanna call it that. Letting us know things that need to be changed.
Change.
Um, some procedural things that we should change for better tracking. Some were put into place, so that's good. Um, and how we can just inform, but they, they want to get info on how we can change and just, most of it's better tracking.
Okay.
Track things better.
And, uh, we are gonna get a report, like a finalized report?
Oh, yeah, they're gonna get us a big report.
Good. Any else?
We're still waiting for people to finish dating dog tag town, but then we have the rabies clinic tomorrow, so hoping people come in, get their rabies shots. Saturday, sorry, not tomorrow, Saturday. Come, come in, get their rabies shots, and pay for the license and be done with it. That's March 1st, the due date, right? It's the 10th, March 10th?
No, February 10th.
February 10th. Oh, they have tomorrow? Saturday. Oh, no.
That's when their tag to do is on Saturday, or is that just the vet?
The tags for do on March 1st.
No, they're 31st. End of March. Oh, it's the end of March, yeah. Oh, okay.
The rabies clinic is the center.
I knew that.
Yeah.
I was asking about that. And then sort of price goes up from 7:50 to 10:00.
What's the rabies shot?
Why? Pardon me?
What's the rabies shot?
The rabies shot?
Twenty bucks.
Twenty bucks.
Twenty bucks.
Anything else? Court clerk.
Oh.
Miss Janet, you're up.
All right, let's see. Okay, so you can see the money, uh, things received in January, or 2549. Um, that includes one deferral payment of $250. So, I just included all citations that were written in 2023, and so far in 2024, which has been canceled. Um, and what money's come in. So, we have court next Friday, the 16th. Um, there's no bench trials right now. The one person who had a bench trial scheduled is doing a deferral. I didn't get the tax number for the court, and it's a new report. Um, nobody's used it yet, except me, Cassie, but that's fine. Just sitting there all lonesome. Um, I submitted the financial report for the COSS grant on January 25th. Um, and then we have a performance report that's due March 1st. And so, we're gonna submit it next week. So, you guys, I think the chief is gone. On March 1st. So, there's that. And then I wanted to talk to you about a couple of things that came up in the audit that the auditors talked, talked about, and Julie and I've talked about, and I've emailed back and forth with the auditors, just to be clear. So, one thing is, um, the money that comes in right now for citations has been going into the police account. It needs to go into the court account that I track as court clerk. So, uh, we'll need to have another, another account. And then I should also be responsible for depositing all the deferral payments that come in and tracking those as well. And so, Julie and I are gonna get together on Saturday and talk about me learning QuickBooks and doing the accounting and all that, how that's all gonna work. So, I think that's, that's it, that's kind of the big thing.
Okay, all right. Just keep us informed on how that goes for you.
We will.
Enjoy QuickBooks.
And accounting. Yes, so fun.
All right. Uh, maintenance, water, sewer, streets, alleys, Councilman Patrick.
Basically, y'all know we had a major water line leak. And, uh, I'd like to thank everybody that was patient and, and got through with all of us. It was a tough little deal, but we got her done. We got her done at pretty good time. We did find out that to shut the whole town off, that valve does not work. So, we're either gonna have to dig it up. And if we dig it up, I suggest we move it to the east a little bit, so we don't have to go into that pavement. So, that needs to be repaired. Uh, we found out that night also that we've got a lot of, uh, uh, shut offs that we couldn't get on. So, basically, what we're gonna have to do is Basin, uh, Gray, Basin or Portland has got a a vacuum deal and a high-pressure washer that they can stick down in there, and they'll suck all that dirt and that gravel out of those. If we would've had a major, major the other night, we would've been able to get the water shut off for everybody. So, the way it was supposed to be, it was supposed to be everybody was shut off, but this side of town over here remained on. So, we definitely gotta get that fixed, but I say it's something that we'll talk about in March or April, because we don't wanna be digging it up with the frost and everything right now.
Perfect.
So, that's something we can do then, uh, getting those other shut offs fixed, or getting the dirt and gravel out of them. We do that about same time I would think.
Okay.
As far as maintenance goes, we've got the entire shop cleaned. Everything's got a place. Well, we kinda messed it up today, we've got some oil on it, or we'll get that up here tomorrow. Uh, we started the maintenance program on all vehicles. Uh, the tractor is completely done, all the new filters, all the zirks greased, everything. We've got a new thermostat in pickup today, because the thermostat was out of it. Tomorrow, we will do the, the main mower. We will have that thing all serviced, ready to go, all change filters done. But hopefully by, by mid next week, we can have the, well, we should be able to have everything done as far as maintenance on all vehicles and equipment done by middle of next week. The other thing that, uh, well, we ain't gonna talk about that this week. But as far as everything else is going, it's going good. We'll just keep plugging away and getting it done. We wanna be ready for spring, not behind the ball like we have been lately.
Yes.
So.
So, is it you and Randy?
Yeah.
And we agreed to charge advertising in March?
Yeah.
Well, we would like to thank you for doing that, because I don't have any account.
Well, it's gotta be done, so there's gotta be. So, anyway, Mr. Mayor, that's all I've done on that today.
Is that furnace in the shop fixed?
Yeah, it's fixed. We was gonna put a new one in there, but they were way more money than we thought they were, they were about $8,000 a piece, and so, we just spent the $600 and switched it up. Got it nicely warmed in there.
Perfect.
Very toasted.
Moving on, online security.
That's not professional.
Okay, then we'll just, uh, oh, maybe we should've amended that. Water board.
Water board?
Miss Chambers.
It, uh, they made your receipt number percentage of 10%. What can I raise the bar?
Okay. All right.
By talking to him here, there's a deal with the audit that we're gonna have to, you guys are gonna have to do.
All right, we'll probably approach that once we get a finalized report, probably.
Well, I think this is a final report.
It is a final, that's an audit. That's our whole audit.
Yeah.
And we're gonna have to add it every year, every year.
What we've gotta do is, is, you know, in the next 30 days is decide how much we're gonna have to go up with that. As we found out during the audit, all enterprise accounts gotta have a reserve fund. And nobody's ever known that as long as I've been around here. But we've been illegal for all these years, because there's no reserve fund for the enterprise account. The enterprise account's for water and sewer, mosquitoes and things like that. So, that's gonna be a determining factor of, of how much we're gonna have to go up, because we've gotta start funding that reserve account. And nobody's gonna like it, but it's, it's gotta happen. I mean, it's just the way it is. You know, we've got X number of taxes. And it's, it's a tough deal. But anyway, we need to discuss that in our first meeting.
Also, what they brought up is, because in our ordinances, we have an ordinance that states that there is going to be late fee for late water payments, that we have not been enforcing that, and we need to enforce it.
We've got to enforce it.
Because according to what we have in our books, we have, uh, 20 days from the time we bill those out. And we've never enforced a late fee, but they said we need to start enforcing a late fee.
So, what would be the deadline after the bills are sent out for the?
Net, net 20, so whatever the date is, you got 20 days.
Okay, so what happens if you don't get a water bill?
Yell at me?
I've been yelling since I quit. I've gotten three water bills since I quit working here, and they came from when I called and asked you about it.
Well, I mailed the last one though.
Oh, I got that one. I'm just, I'm, yeah, I'm serious, because sometimes, like my mom asked me two and a half months ago, why she haven't gotten water bill? It's, she's a, they go to the post office every day, so.
Has anybody else got that?
But our colleagues know that.
Yes.
Really? So then, you know, two and a half months ago, swimming.
Until we get it done, I'll interrupt. Until we get somebody in office that's permanent for clerk, besides, and you're gonna have missed, hit missed.
But is it the clerk or is it post office?
No, I, uh, who knows?
Well, that's what I'm asking, I mean, I just don't win it on the clerk.
No, it's not, but it is.
You know, she's getting them out, what's happening between?
Right, and when I was working here and I took the water bills to the post office, Jim told me if you separate the Manderson water bills from the people out of town, they take the Manderson ones, do the stamp and all the crap on it, and put them in their bottles that day.
I thought they had to go to Casper and back everything.
That's what Jim told me, and I, and the whole year I worked there, that's what they did.
They know that.
I didn't either, because I thought everything went to Casper.
So it died, and he told me that, and I'm like, sweet! That was a courtesy. That's a courtesy from the post office.
I didn't know that.
It worked out great.
Also, people that wanna give their, you know?
Jim told me too. I mean, I can start sending them to Casper, if you don't want me to.
Can I go to him, could you ask him, Mr. Chambers, when the 10% increase goes into the act?
To aye for me.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll throw down. Uh, we're getting that 10%, and we're getting a 2%, and now he's wanting to jack it up more? Y'all decided to charge us an extra 2% starting January 1st? And now they're gonna be jacked up more?
We may have to take care of each other.
Well, it's gotta be, I mean, we've gotta be self-sufficient. They're not saying 10% on the individual bills, they're saying our bill that we get from joint powers is gonna be raised by 10% as a whole. We need to see how that actually applies to people. Is that gonna be 10% plus 2%?
The way Councilman Patrick put it, like me, to me, it was gonna go on all of our bills, the 10%.
Yeah, it's what we, what we get billed for the joint water power, right? Powers water board is going up by 10%.
Thank you for clarifying, I appreciate that.
How that applies to everybody else's water.
And one thing that you need to be aware of is, anything on this water deal, make sure you put it in the budget.
Oh, my God.
If you don't, it'll come back to haunt you.
We've run across that already, too.
Yeah, no, it has to be in the budget.
All right, as we continue working, I would highly recommend that, aside from the public, that we keep everybody informed of what's going on concerning that water bill. So, before we actually, you know, kick it, you know, kick it off, once we get all, everything finalized, I highly recommend that we, uh, you know, send out the, the 10% increase, what, uh, what we're planning on increasing, the late fees, all of that explained to everybody, like, this is what's happening, this is going on now. So, nobody's caught off guard. Right? Okay? All right. Officer Kittle? Jeez!
I'm gonna be here long.
We are here, I'm sorry.
Damn!
We have a big list, just kidding.
Um, just a couple of things from us. Number one is, I don't know if you noticed the signs coming in and out of town, the Dope Highway, they finally put our, our signage on there, so that's kinda cool. We got recognized finally, so we just have to continue to, um, do it however fast we can, so we'll set a date here in, probably in spring, and clean up again, so. And then, the only other thing I have is, we looked into revisiting the e-citations of the police department. Um, so we wanna run that by you guys, and just get your input, or get a A or an A, or think about it, but e-citations are like, like citations, so we don't have to write them out, we basically put them on our computer, um, and then it prints it out, so. With e-citation, it's a, it's a pretty big, um, hit to begin with. But the reason why we would like to go e-citations is because it'll cut the traffic stop almost half. Um, all it has, like, a scanner on this, with this, um, equipment, so all you have to do is scan the driver's license, scan the registration, it automatically populates everything. It automatically populates our location, automatically populates the next court date. And so, with that, obviously, because sometimes when you're writing off bunch tickets today, or just, if like, riding very good, you know, Janet has to read Kittle, whatever, man riding, so she's pretty good at, aside from what I, what we do, but it would cut the errors down tremendously if we went to this, clearly, like I said, be digital. Um, so fewer errors would also be, you know, fewer data entries for, for Janet, um, less time spent entering stuff, because all she has to do is look at it, I think, and approve it, and then she sends it directly to the Supreme Court. Um, so, um, it's obviously better bookkeeping, because if I accidentally write a different number on somebody's driver's license or on their registration, it doesn't come back, or we have to go to send them a, a late notice of, or notice of suspension, you know, sometimes the coast is the wrong person, because, you know, just because one digit is off in the driver's license, so, um, we'll cut down with that. Says future ability to streamline court, um, and bookkeeping functions, so, like I said, it just goes from our computer, we download, goes to Janet's computer. Um, she approves it, looks at it, does her thing, and then she sends it directly to the Supreme Court, so it's just a, just a few-step process. Do you have to still scan it?
Yeah, I can explain the process.
Go ahead.
So, uh, we're not doing this Supreme Court thing. So, how it'll work is, I went up to Grayville and met with their court clerk, Grayville uses this system, and I met with their, um, while I was waiting for her, she was in a meeting. Uh, their sergeant at their showed it, showed me their system. And it's really, like, it's so amazing, so they, um, they have a little printer, it's like the, like the receipt printers that you see, you know, for, yeah. It's like, yeah, it's like that big, it's the same size, actually, as the citation, it's the same width. And, um, so what they would do is they have a scan, the guys would have a scanner in their car, when they pull somebody over, and they just, they scan the driver's license, uh, it's all, auto-populates. They can select things in their computer, it goes right to their computer, and they can select different things, like the, the violation, um, the speed, like that. And then, uh, what it does is it stores it, I was a little confused about how this works, it stores it on their computer, in their car, and then, when they come in, at the end of their shift, it, um, uses, it connects to the wifi here, and syncs all that to, to the cloud. And then, the next day, I come in and I download all that as a, as a, what's called a CSV file. It's a, uh, like a spreadsheet file, that I would then import into the Excel file that I keep right now. So, a lot of my functions will stay pretty much the same. The only thing different is that I won't be spending in the summertime, three or four hours, literally, every day, doing data entry. And so, you know, there's just, there's mistakes that happen, and like BJ said, um, some, you know, it just takes time. The other thing, the other, uh, thing that will happen is that it'll, um, decrease the scanning time that I have when I scan these tickets to, to Cheyenne, when it's all done. So, um, right now, I just scan one page at a time, using this, this scanner right here. And if we have that, then it'll be two pages, that they're gonna, they can set it up how we want. So, it'll be both sides of the citation on one page, and I can just, like, run it through, and it'll take, instead of taking two hours to scan in 100 tickets, it'll take maybe 10 minutes. So, it'll be a whole lot better. Um, and I think, you know, just sort of cutting down on things like that would be really great. BJ actually underestimated what Tyler says is, uh, it takes three minutes. They, their average estimate is three minutes per stop.
Man can walk up to a car and back in three minutes, so.
Maybe their guys walk faster.
Maybe my average stop right now is probably 15 minutes, and I don't wanna be too much, I mean, obviously, I spend time at the vehicle when I walk up there, just to make sure everything's kosher and everything's good, you know, hear, see, or smell anything up there. But when you get back in the car, you have to speed up the process of issuing the citation in the morning, and get back up the vehicle, and order people to leave.
So scary.
Oh, tell them the number.
Oh, so, the initial startup fee, one-time cost, is gonna be just under $20,000. So, this covers all, what's that?
Well, because we gotta pay the, the, and the, plus, that's like something we bring.
So, the equipment is about, and Janet has this print office, you can add it to here, but the equipments, uh, for the car, like the printers, the scanners, and all that, it's probably just over $4,600. Uh, the setup and the configuration, because they have to, like, put our calendar map in there, and put our court dates and our, our state statutes and all that in there, which, and then, they're gonna, they'll send some of here to travel here to, um, to try and install on it. And then, it says optional charter of stations for printers, I'm not sure what that is, but.
That's so, they can, when they come in, they can just charge those printers up, like they, like they put their body cams on the charger in there? They can just put the, those, can't, those printers.
And then there's an added return fee of just over $1,800 for the licensing and the, the fees and stuff that we use, so. I know High Patrol uses this system, like Janet said, Grayville PD uses this system. So, I mean, the biggest agency in Wyoming uses it, so it's, it's a very decent.
Well, I think it sounds pretty good, but I'd sure like to look at our budget before we made a decision on it, and see where we're at.
Understand.
Because we, we won't get busy till?
May.
May. So, how long is it gonna take if we, if we moved on this to get the equipment and everything?
I can, I can find out, I'd say, you know, at least a couple of months. So, we don't wanna be trying to do this in the summertime. Switch over.
So, I'd definitely like to look at the budget, too, when we have, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I would agree with that, I see, make sure we have, uh, everything covered before we jump in. I mean, I do like the idea of streamlining, you know, get, you know, get you guys out there further, just don't wanna bite out, I don't wanna make you right now, so.
True, understand.
Okay.
That's why I brought it up, so.
All right.
Better than that, please promise runs smoothly and good, so no complaints from us.
All right, well, that's good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
What?
Mark is the fourth.
Hey, moving on to old business.
What is real business, have we got new business? We talked about that. Okay. Uh, mayor's comments? I don't have any right now. So, we're gonna move on to public comments, who'd like to go, who'd like to enlighten the, the time here, please.
So, I would like to see if I could have my two horses close here. When we first moved here, they were between Grayville and Shell, that was quite a drive to go check on them and stuff. Now, they're at Basin, but I really would like to have them closer, um, because they are my husband's stress relief. And when I'm at the cafe all the time, I might want to drive in, into Basin very often to go check on them and stuff with them.
Could you, uh, maybe provide, like, a little report on, like, where you're gonna put them, how you're gonna fence them in and all that?
Well, we had checked into a couple of different places, but then when we dealt with everything that you guys have dealt with, with the chickens and goats and stuff, we were like, oh, let's not even pursue it. But we, um, the people are the lady that lives past campground there. She has got acreage and stuff, and we fenced them, and we have panels, and that we used, um, that we used when we were at home in Idaho. And we have a shelter, that's a part of the one that's been put up. And the husband takes care of them very well, begins them and spoils them.
I think we need to table and have a discussion first.
Sure.
That's my opinion. Talk to me about this after.
I agree.
Talk to me about this after, because I have a solution for you.
We will definitely be, uh, we'll table this for it now.
Pardon?
We're, we're gonna table this, so we have a chance to discuss that.
Right.
So, if you, uh, would just be so kind to give us a little bit of time, we will get you back a definite answer.
Okay.
Right, we'll bring up the agenda, but we'll do our research, teach an answer. We'll see if we can help you out on that.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
She's gonna ask that. Chamber brought it up, I was gonna ask why they're not paying bills.
We'll take care of it.
It's not really town-related, it's kind of personal.
Okay.
But, so, we just moved our stuff, some more stuff up from Colorado, and we have, I'm looking for three or four really young, scrapping men. And we have, I'm looking for three or four really young, scrapping men to help us unload the guns.
Come back here. Do you realize?
I'm just, I'm just saying, it's only for the guns sake, it's not that personal. So if anybody has that kind of information, could you just let us know?
Okay.
Could you use that? Put the workout box cat or something with a lift.
Oh, do you have?
No, I don't, but I have, I've got to say, it took everything, which you did.
It took four, it took four guys to load it up, so I'm thinking it takes four guys to unload it, so.
Excuse me, ma'am, my husband will volunteer to help.
He said volunteer.
I'm not scrapping, I'm not young, but I'll try.
So do you have, do you have a couple of friends?
I'll see what I can dig up. What, forgive me for asking, we're just going to see what we can do right now.
So if you want, you can put down a phone number and call.
I'll, I'll catch up with you. Okay, any other public comment?
Wasn't that an interesting request?
Yes, please.
I've got a couple of questions. How is the water bill, how are the water meters being read, or is it just, are they being read, or is it just an estimate right now?
No, we read them every month. They get read with the.
Do truckers look like a turn thing outside those people's houses?
Right, I was just wondering, because I've just noticed, like, our bill's been the exact same for the past four months, down to the exact cent.
Yeah, generally in the wintertime, that's the way it is because we don't, we don't.
You go to the minimum usually in the winter.
Well.
You know, water and stuff like that.
You're not using any water outside or anything else, so that'll be a big reason. Like, mine ain't changed in three, four months.
Also, with the water usage rate, there's the base amount. With the usage rate, you get the first 2,000 gallons free. We only start counting it for the per whatever amount, whatever the rate is, after 2,000 gallons. So if you're staying in that 2,000 gallon range, it's going to stay the same all the time.
Okay, and then I noticed that you guys actually have your counter receivable report that's got everybody's water bill on it.
Ooh, that's a no-no.
And it's been out here posted for everybody.
I've heard that since I've been here, it used to come out with the minutes. I thought, uh-huh, that's kind of what we've had in use before.
Yeah, we did discuss that a while ago, like, and decided to stop putting that out.
Where did we go?
Jim was there.
Yeah, when, I believe, Mr. Patrick's mayor.
I guess we'll have to look it up, because I have, I've got him from the way that.
Yeah, because it was agreed, well, I can't speak for everybody, but love for this concern about how much your pain for everybody else on that. Really, I, in my opinion, I think that's what.
It's not public pressure, your bills are not public pressure.
Yeah, they shouldn't be posted.
They shouldn't be posted.
According, according to the attorneys, they did beat that out of. My opinion, yeah, I'm not saying they should be, I'm saying, yeah, if they got put out by mistake, it's still legal.
Well.
Won't happen again.
Yeah, we do apologize for that. We will increase our prevention from that happening.
It's a whole purchase, it's a counter receivable, and it's everybody, it's everybody's water bill in the town.
Yeah.
If they're past due, how far they're past due and everything.
Well, thank you for us bringing that up.
I'd press for the council, if not for public consumption.
The white sheen on it.
That's all I got, sorry.
Oh, no, that's fine, thank you, I appreciate that. All right, any other public comments?
Those farm people don't have to be men, women will work.
Okay, I got to volunteer.
Why did she not?
Well, happy here, yeah.
Well, I'll help if I can.
If I was here, I'd volunteer, yeah. You are, are all by yourselves.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Before we move on, whether or not we need an executive session, if there's no further public comment, I'd like to take this time to entertain a motion to carry bills.
All seconded.
Motion for a seconded, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Uh, motion carries. Moving on. Executive session.
I don't.
Can you skip council comments?
Nope, come up here.
Okay. Sorry.
No, executive session. So council comments?
We did, Judy and I yesterday did take the chicken ordinances to the chicken, the people that's got chickens, so those have been delivered. So it's not, we're picking on any one individual, and it's like Judy and I told them yesterday, is we got ordinances, we got rules, we got following. So everybody's got the ordinance now, it's got chickens. So I think what we need to do is, is we need to decide when we're going to start enforcing the ordinance.
And that's for, first off, the biggest question we need to address before we enforce the ordinance is who's going to enforce it, so we need to discuss that.
Well, we can't make any decisions on that.
Again, so someone.
Yeah, so anyway, just letting them know that those are.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate you folks doing that. Any other council comments?
Didn't the public just also say we need to start enforcing anything we've got on the books?
Yeah. We have a lot that we didn't know, that others have not known, and we've got to start doing a whole lot of taking care of things that haven't been done. And if you don't, it's going to be, or whether it's going to be the bad guy who's doing it, yeah, that's what we thought to. We learned a lot.
Well, it's anything to them.
You know, we did ask, and we didn't know what, well, you can never know before.
Right.
So we learned a lot. So people that, you know, they get used to, this is the way we do it, this is the way we enforce it, this must, that should be done. So you want to learn?
Any other comments? I'd like to entertain a motion for adjournment. I have a motion for a seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor?
All right.
We are adjourned at 7:08 PM. Next meeting is March 18th, 2024, 6:00.